All right. Good evening. This is Tuesday, January 12th, 2021 meeting of the Town of Berlin Planning Board. As a preliminary matter, please note this meeting is being recorded and that some of the attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you. Excuse me. Hi, how are you? Can you hear me? Yeah, you Janet, you called my cellphone.
And I put a different number in.
Oh, you called my cellphone.
Oh, good.
I'm going to Tim change.
Have magic fingers. Wait a minute. I'll do it again.
Jay's holding the number up. Hold it up a little bit more, Jay. There you go.
Oh, five, five, five. Is that right? Oh, five, five, eight.
Oh, I don't think she was looking anyway.
We'll save it for next week then.
I don't know what my meeting ID is.
It's.
ID. Oh, eight, seven, one, three, two, nine, five.
That's a meeting ID number? Eight, seven, one, three, two, nine, five. Thank you.
Shall we continue? Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you. Anything you intend to or not screen share on your computer. Anything that, anything that you broadcast may be captured or recorded. And they possibly wind up as a TikTok video be shared amongst your friends and neighbors. This is Tom Sanford, Chair of the Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda.
They told me that meeting ID does not exist.
Are present and can hear me prior to be calling the meeting to order. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Jay Teach.
Affirmative.
Timothy Wheeler.
Yeah.
Carolyn McDonald.
Here.
Janet Campbell.
Oh, eleven oh six.
Yeah, I was gonna say you missed the last.
Tom Sanford here. Without Worcester Sand and Gravel, there's no anticipated speakers on the agenda. With a quorum of the planning board present, I call this meeting to order at seven forty-two PM Tuesday, January 12th, 2021. This open meeting of the planning board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020. Due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts due to outbreak of COVID-19 virus. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public can be found on the Town of Berlin's website. The governor's order suspends the requirement of an open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. And allows and encourages us to participate remotely. For this meeting, the planning board is convening using the Zoom platform as posted on the agenda, which includes links for the general public to join this meeting. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I'll invite board members by name to provide any comments, questions, penetrating insights and or motions. Please hold all your insights until your name is called. Lastly, please note that each vote in the meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. Thank you all for your understanding and cooperation. So we have, I mean, it's open. So like I said, the agenda is not heavy at all. We were supposed to from seven forty-five to eight review mail and pay bills, but unfortunately I did not go through the mailbox. So we don't have anything to review and order pack. Eight o'clock was going to be the discussion with Worcester Sand and Gravel, but they decided not to participate. So. We can move right into there was a request to review and discuss changes to the subdivision control law. For upgrading street lighting to LEDs consistent with the initiatives that we have in town.
How moved that we accept the minutes of December eighth.
Thank you. That's perfect. That's.
A second.
I'll, I have to do a roll call vote. Any discussion?
They were beautiful.
There you go.
I sent him thirty-two minutes ago. You read them pretty quickly.
Oh, good. I'm glad.
We have a motion to accept the minutes of last meeting. And when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Jay Teach.
Yes.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Tom Sanford, aye, and Janet's not here. So Janet Campbell, but. You can record it as a non-vote if you wish. So back to our, we were asked to. Review and discuss the changes to subdivision control that'll bring us in line with. The changes that the, the town has done. In particular, upgrading to allow for LED lights in the streetlights. Is my understanding from the quick little blurb that we got. Is Tim, do you have anything to add to that? You got the same blurb as I did, or did we cover it?
Yeah, I guess. You know, normally in the past, we haven't encouraged the creation of additional streetlights for the town. Cause there was an expense that was pretty significant, but. Now I suspect they're, they want to encourage streetlights where advisable. And if we put something in the, in the subdivision control law, that's just said. In cases where there'll be an intersection with the, you know, a primary road. The, the town would expect the developer to, you know, put up a streetlight. And then that's something that if, if we said it's not necessary, we could review it with. The Energy Committee or whatever and the selectmen and you could waive it, you know, but if we wanted it. I know some people don't particularly want a lot of lighting in their neighborhoods, but in other cases, if it's an intersection and it would be dangerous not to have a light there, it'd be probably advisable. So. So easy enough to do.
So, so the, the, we have street lighting that's in the subdivision control now.
I can't. So what does it say?
Is it just requiring that the lights be LED?
Well, my understanding of the request to us was that we added that provision.
Okay.
That, you know, when they do do a street light, that it be is an LED.
Okay.
That was my understanding. So, because we already have a provision in the bylaw.
And generally we waived it.
We've waived them because that was in the past.
Yeah.
A lot of people didn't want light pollution and light bleed.
I think we just changed it to say if. Streetlights are going to be included, that they must be LED.
So here, here's a question. Instead of stating that it should be LED. Should we put in the latest technology or something like that? So we don't.
Or consistent with the rest of the town.
We can put that too, but you, you might find that you're going to have inconsistencies in the town. When you have some people that have upgraded and other places that haven't upgraded.
Right.
Hasn't the town, oh, I see what you mean. Like, cause right now we're all LED, right? Didn't we do that last year?
I'm not totally sure if it was townwide.
Okay.
I know some have, because I know that the, that was one of the questions that. What's his name?
Right. So Eloise is here and she's raising her hand.
Oh, good.
I was hoping that she would have the answer.
There we go.
There we go. Eloise, you just need to unmute. Oh, there you go.
Okay, the town streetlights were converted. But there are some private lights and I'm not sure if they were converted. If you want, I can send an email to Tim Wysocki. His. Project.
Right.
Okay. Well, bottom line is that we really should upgrade the subdivision control. To reflect what we're doing, but I, I think that instead of, I mean, that would be my suggestion, instead of, you know, saying that it should be LEDs. It should be something along the lines of latest technology. And then we can say it has to be LEDs when we're writing our decision. Or whatever the technology is at the time.
Right.
I like that.
Yeah, because there's still part of the subdivision control law that have some very old. I think lighting technology required. There's some discussion in neon lights and stuff.
Eloise is raising her hand again, or. Eloise, did you want to say something else?
No, I was trying, I was trying to lower my hand.
Oh, okay.
Whenever we decide to do, if it's a change to the subdivision control, then we're going to need to do a. Have a hearing and then, you know, a vote, right?
It doesn't have to be town meeting.
No.
Oh, it doesn't?
Subdivision control, we do ourselves.
Oh, okay. All right. Then we don't have to have a public hearing about it?
Yeah, we have to have a hearing, but.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay.
So. What's the alternative? Because. The only non LEDs outdoor light that I've seen for sale recently was one I got for like $5 because it was in the discount bin. And even that was a fluorescent. I don't know if you can buy anything else right now.
Right. But I think what Tom's saying is if in 10 years they come up with something even more efficient than LEDs. That we don't have to change it in 10 years.
Maybe we should say something like, we have the authority to specify what type of lighting is used. Something like that.
We could.
Cause I, I do think I was looking for it, but the. There's, there's some sections of the current bylaw that specify non-current technology.
No.
No?
You'd be shocked to discover that.
That's the trap you get into when you start, you know, some of this changing so often, you nail it down, yours go by.
Right. Well, I, right. So if we don't specify, oh, my cat is trying to climb up onto my computer.
They might have penetrating insight. They have a light difference.
Yeah. Bob, do you want to say something? Yeah. So if we keep it, if we keep it. A little bit more vague, but maybe state that the goal is for energy efficiency or something.
See, the thing I was trying to, to avoid is, is that if we left it like that. And a proponent came in and wanted to make a stinker of us about technology. You know, that we think LEDs is the way to go and he wants to do something else that's not. And now we're in to debate about what's more efficient. And I really don't want to be the trap a cop. Efficiency on lighting, you know, especially if they're doing a subdivision, there's so much other things that we have to worry about whether we worry about lights. I mean, I don't, I don't care. I'll go along with the group, but I, I just think that we, we, we're setting ourselves up for something that we really don't want to do.
Right. But we also don't want to leave it so vague that someone can come in with a box full of incandescents either.
True, true. But if, could they make the argument that that's the latest technology?
Incandescent?
It would be hard. It'd be hard.
Made in America. All the LEDs are made in China.
There you go.
Well, that doesn't mean it's the most. Latest technology.
I, I don't care. I mean, I was just a thought. I, I, you know, if, if people feel strongly, I'm not gonna, I'll do, I'll go. I'm not gonna get crazy about a light.
Well, what was your language? Yours was the, at the discretion of the planning board or. Newest technology or what was it?
Mine was latest technology.
Yeah, you could say latest technology to be determined by the planning board.
We could.
Yeah. And then. Then we get the final say and we argue that it has to deal with. Energy efficiency and all that stuff. So, yeah.
That's fine. Might work. Either word latest out.
It would probably be good if Jay has a chance to have him go through the bylaw and identify those other discrepancies and maybe clean up.
Mission. I already gave him a mission.
I think it's in the zoning book, not in the subdivision book.
But we could clean, we should do some clean, cleaning up. I mean. I wonder if, if we should ask the highway superintendent. What he thinks of the standards that we've outlined. For road construction and whether those are so out of date that it makes it hard for him. I mean.
Could be. Yeah.
I, I'd be, I'd be perfectly willing to reach out to him and, because he's had that experience with the road on. Off of West Street there, you know. Maybe he's come up with some ideas that he'd like to see modified. So we could do it all at the same time.
This is the new.
Yeah, that's quite a slope on that driveway that, or that rode in.
And it was going to be worse.
Really?
Well, we made him cut into the grade of the old railroad bed. They wanted to leave it above that.
Right. Wow. Yeah, I drove past there last week and was, it is the first time I really noticed it. Maybe it was recently paved or something. But I was shocked at the straight, steep slope of that.
Yeah.
That doesn't shed water into the West Street, does it?
Well, it's not supposed to, you know.
It did for, it did before it was paved for sure. Um, I can't imagine it doesn't now.
Wasn't that ten percent grade? The peak, the maximum was 10%?
It's supposed to be flat at the, at the street for 50 feet back or something.
Yes, 50.
Well, I didn't pay that close attention to, to how flat it was at the road and how far in, but.
I think the one on Sawyer Hill is, is a little bit steeper. I think it was almost 12%.
Yeah. Anyway, I'll, I'll, I'll reach out to him if you want me to.
Yes, please.
Cause he's had experience now and he could tell us whether he foresees problems in the future. So.
Yeah.
And do, we'll do that all at once?
Yeah, we could, we could make a, you know, whatever Jay sees that he wants to change and this light thing and maybe some stuff that Dave picks up.
So everyone read Ron's email that there's a proposal to. Baker wants more housing. And so there's proposal to change the zoning voting threshold from two thirds to 50%.
I saw that. Is it a proposal or?
It's been floating around for a while, right?
Right.
So it's past the house.
Okay. I thought I saw that it passed something.
It's waiting for Baker's signature.
So that means if you have a very confusing. Article in the warrant. You know, like. The vote is to not accept an amendment to something or other, yada, yada, yada. So nobody can figure out which way to vote. You've got a 50% chance of it passing. And if it gets put back in the next year, because it didn't pass, you got 75% chance.
So it's, it, it specifically addresses issues relating to housing. And maybe a couple of the categories, but it's not a blanket for all zoning, as I understand it.
But the intention is. It's, you know, it's like the 40B law. The intention is to get more housing.
Right.
But prevent the towns from putting limits on housing.
Yeah.
Worth management.
Yeah, but 50% is chance, right? That's the, that's the thing that's disturbing.
Yep.
Yeah.
So you slip something in, nobody notices and you got a 50% chance of getting it to pass. And if it's a developer who's proposing it, they just keep putting it in. Eventually they get it.
Yep.
And there's nothing we could do at the town level to insulate us from that?
You know, just make a good argument either for it or against it, depending on where we stand.
Right.
And I mean, and generally people are good about listening. So. If we can inform the public, if we really feel there's flaws, then. You know, we've, we've had reasonable luck. We, because there's some things we've tried to pass that we thought were good that at two thirds never went through. So.
Right.
I, I of course think two thirds made a lot of sense because you really had to convince people that it was the best thing to do. And as a result, you had support, but.
Now it's a coin toss.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, so the Sennies need to just keep putting the drive-through.
Don't even.
Try to make it as obscure as possible. Son of a Lee notices.
Well, but see that. That may be outside of that bound. I mean, it, it doesn't relate to housing. So.
That's right.
It may be a zoning issue that remains at two thirds. I haven't looked at the text. So.
Yep, if I write.
Do you want a quick report on? The ACABET. Collaborative for. Housing or whatever it is.
Oh, yeah. Please.
So they met today in their, their. Foxborough, Littleton. Hudson, Devens, Harvard, Lancaster.
Stowe.
Yeah, it seems like Stowe is in there. And we asked to be admitted. And they were positive in their comments. They didn't vote today. They'll, they'll vote the next time they meet. So they have a chance to. Get feedback from folks if they didn't want to speak up in the public forum. But. It was a. You know, it was a good session. It felt reasonably supportive. They did talk about this. Change in the fact that they're waiting for Baker to sign. But they, because they deal with housing, were keenly interested because it would make things. Easier in some of the member towns to get some. Inclusionary zone and stuff and things like that. A lot of these towns like Lancaster doesn't have anything, I don't think. And a couple of the others didn't have much. I think Littleton was trying to revise theirs. Margaret asked if we would. Vote to free up up to $7,000 out of the housing fund that the housing partnership has. To be used for the dues that would be necessary for the first year. It, they would start in July. With the next fiscal year. So. But I said, I, I'd make a motion that we free up up to $7,000 for the payment of dues to the. I can't remember that. It's a asset, but. I'll look it up. But in any way, the consortium. So that's my motion anyway.
Second.
Any further discussions? This money from. Our fund or?
Well, it's the fund that we control. It's not our money.
Yeah.
Phew, because I don't have that kind of cash.
It's Eloise's money.
Planning Board money or it's the.
It's Eloise's, but she can't spend it unless we authorize it.
Oh, okay.
What's the name of the source of the money?
Well, some of it came.
Jay Teach.
Yeah, it came from Highland Commons. Some of it came from when they did Brook Lane, right?
Yep, Brook Lane. That's the majority of it.
What's the, what's the name of the whatever account?
How?
Call it the housing partnership account for, yeah.
And does anybody recall or know how much money is in that account?
I think Eloise would tell you it's close to half a million.
I didn't think it was that much.
Maybe it's 370. Eloise, do you know?
Go ahead, Eloise. You're.
I think it's about 160,000.
Oh, no, it's more than that.
Either way, 7,000 isn't going to be a problem.
No.
Well, there's the other, we have, I believe, two accounts.
Oh, that's what it is. You've stashed it in different hiding places. I think it's the ACABET Regional Housing Consortium. ACABET Regional Housing Consortium.
Yeah, that's what it is.
We have a motion and a second and some discussion. Is there any more discussion? No. Okay. Then I will call for a vote by roll call. Jay Teach.
Aye.
I should have said to support Timmy's motion to transfer $7,000 to. The ACABET Valley Consortium, Housing Consortium. Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Tom Sanford, aye. Okay. Jan, I don't see Janet again, but I'll call her name anyways. Janet Campbell. Okay.
You sure the name of this isn't the Metro West Regional Housing Consultant?
Don't pay the wrong person.
Cause I know we talked about it a while ago. Just looking through the minutes.
Oh, did I say Metro West?
Well, no, you said the ACABET Regional Housing Consortium.
I looked at their email invitation and it's ACABET. Regional Housing Consortium on that. So.
I, I think the. Teach has the original name and then it switched.
Oh. Put that in.
Because it started more around 128, but it's been more. On between 128 and 495, but with Lancaster and Boxboro and. It's getting bigger.
But this is the, this is the group that monitors. Our affordable.
ODB.
Right.
Yeah. So that the old name was Metro West Regional Housing Consultants. At least that's what we have in our minutes.
You know, there are, there's a. Hudson supports this effort. And they may very well have a subset that is the name that you're using. That really is the technical crew. And then they service the consortium.
Yeah, because this says they have agreements with Harvard, Lancaster, Bolton, Stowe and Hudson.
Yeah. That's must be what, so, because there's Jen and Nancy that are the ones that are. That they, you know, the conversation today was. Do you feel like you have the capacity to pick up an extra town? And they said. They felt they did, but if people that were members thought that they weren't getting their phone calls answered quick enough, they ought to speak up and. Let them know. Cause you know, then. They could identify that there might be some issues, but overall, everybody was supportive. Lancaster said they thought it'd be great to have another smaller town that was similar to Lancaster and. Stowe and stuff. So.
Well, if you look in your October 13th minutes online, you'll get all about it.
So Tim, what was the name of, you said ACABET Valley?
No, ACABET, ACABET Regional Housing Consortium.
How many Ts in ACABET? Let me tease in Assabit.
One.
We just voted in favor?
We voted in favor.
We won't have to free up the money for a while. I can check and correct the minutes if we need to.
Right. So, yeah, Assabit Regional Housing Consortium is a collaboration among member communities Bolton, Boxford, Devens, Harvard, Hudson, Lancaster, Littleton and Stowe. Technical assistance reviewing housing production plans, propose senior housing bylaws. Oh, but that's very interesting. Their email, their website address is metrowestcd.org.
Okay.
So I think they are both the same thing.
What are we going to do with all the rest of that money?
Well, one of the things they spoke of today was when someone's looking at affordable housing and they're going to pay 80% of the mean and they're looking at Stowe and they're looking at, at Berlin. If Berlin were to throw an extra 10 or 15,000 into the pot so that someone would have that extra bit of cash to buy into their affordable unit. They might very well decide to move to Berlin rather than Stowe. And so if we had a unit that was comparable, but you know, they felt, well, I'm a few miles closer to my workplace in Stowe. And we weren't able to get that unit filled like we've lost some, of course, because you know, people couldn't find somebody that would qualify. Having 10 or $15,000 to throw into the original deal sometimes can be enough to incentivize someone to make that choice. So. They talked about that today as, as one of the options that some of these towns have used. And because the Community Preservation Act is going to be putting 10% of its allocation on an annual basis into housing and then potentially some of the 70% that's outside of those 10% categories. You know, there's, there's the possibility of adding money that, you know, we might work with Habitat for Humanity and say, you know, here's a piece of land that we've taken through tax title and here's some money that the town will back up through the Housing Partnership toward the completion of a, of a affordable unit on that property and get Habitat to come in and work on it and build ourselves some extra affordable units. So we don't slip. I looked at the the S H I and we were at 201 units that we're calling right now affordable and maybe Eloise wants to comment, but not all apartments at River Bridge are, are full right now. So the question is will the 2020 census reflect only the inhabited units at River Bridge? And, and that's the federal census. If that's the case, then then we may not reach the, the full number that we're going to have when River Bridge is complete, but we're going to live with that number for the next decade. I mean, if it was, you know, 1575 for total housing units rather than 1600 or 16 and a quarter, it means we've got a little more of a buffer for the next decade. Anyway, if we're at 201. How many households did you mail to Eloise when you're doing your census this year?
About 1,500.
1,500.
Well, you could have a two family home.
Yep.
So that would be considered two families.
Two families. Yeah. But, and, and what'd you have about 50% of the River Bridge apartments were full?
Yes.
Yeah. Do you know, so did the federal, does the federal census, if a unit is, is uninhabited at the time of the census, it's, it's not counted as a dwelling?
I don't know that. I just know that the housing numbers have been delayed for the 2000, the 2020 census.
There's a shock.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Uh, we have to laugh, right?
Yeah, right?
Yeah, for sure.
So it looks like we might be in decent shape, especially with CPA funds to work towards keeping our head above water.
Yep. And particularly if we can work with this group, because I think they're willing to take on other, other responsibilities beyond just the maintenance of the inventory, you know, making sure on an annual basis that we're checking in with people that are living in affordable units to consider, you know, that whether there's, nothing's changed, that sort of thing. And you know, Eloise and I were talking today about a number of things that they might be able to do for us. And that might, you know, add on to the ticket price, but you know, we're not in a handicap position where we don't have the money. So we could, we can hire them to do the stuff that helps us maintain these units and perhaps add more. So that'd be great.
You had mentioned their willingness to write a, a housing production plan, which we have to do on a semi annual basis anyways, right? Part of the master planning?
Yeah, they might be able to help with that. You know, we've been using Central Mass for that, but and well, we've been using, we use Karen Sonnenberg and we use Judy Barrett and Central Mass helped a little bit, but yeah.
But if they're willing to do it and it's part of our dues, then.
Yep.
I don't see why that would be a bad thing.
Awesome. That's all, it's all in the right direction.
We have to have our annual report done by the 29th or something. 20 what, second?
Well, I had asked Jay to write it up for the 22nd.
And then I don't know when the warrant closes, but I'm assuming we're just going to roll with the articles that we bypassed a year ago. It's hard to believe, isn't it?
Right. Yeah, I don't see any reason why not. Maybe we need to add anything. I don't think we want to add anything, do we?
I'll, I'll find those and send them around to everybody.
There were.
We can review them next time.
Five, we pulled four, right?
I think so.
And then there was the one that was held last year. They did the four general bylaws, but they didn't do the zoning. So that's still left hanging.
Did we, we didn't do the marijuana one though, right?
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Right. Because didn't we also have a couple that were supposed to be on the special town fall, uh, fall town meeting that, and I think that was there.
Yep, that's right.
So Eloise, how does that work if there's whatever happened? Like, how close did we get?
I think the one that's outstanding, that's waiting the governor's signature, I think that was to do with the zoning, but was the sand and gravel?
We're going to rezone that?
That's the one we turned down. So it was moot.
In that case, I have to go check.
But I, I mean, so for the fall.
We don't usually have one in the fall.
Right.
People talk about it, but we don't usually have one in the fall. We only have one as needed.
Right. But last fall.
We're supposed to have it for December 5.
We were supposed to have one and then it got postponed indefinitely.
Correct.
Did, was there, like, how far in the process was the warrant? I mean, there was nothing.
It was COVID. It was the Berlin Boylston Regional School Committee didn't have their question done. There were a number of issues.
So Senes, I would imagine would be knocking on the door about their articles.
Right.
Yeah, that, that got put on hold.
Right. So does that, I guess my question is the items that were on for the fall, do those automatically roll into the spring annual town meeting if there isn't a town meeting before that?
That's a great question for Margaret.
Okay.
I, I think they're going to expect us to ante up again and say, we, we want these to be on the warrant.
Okay.
And usually the warrant closes sometime around Val, I always associate it with Valentine's Day.
Yeah. So if we had a chance to look at those articles next time we met, then if we wanted to make any changes, we'd have one more meeting in February probably before they would do.
Right.
That'd be good.
We're going to have to, especially with the Senes, we're going to have to hold a hearing because we never held a hearing.
Right.
This hearing too.
Right.
That's all I've got.
All right. I just have one thing from Conservation. So Conservation Commission is starting to meet with other boards about the wetlands bylaw. I know, Tim, that I forwarded that to you. Did I forward that to the rest of you to look at in the past couple of months?
I think I saw a draft of it.
You do or you don't?
Like a year.
Draft of it.
Right. The one from last year is not what this is.
Using it with.
Right. Okay. I'll resend it. And if Conservation could get on the agenda for our next meeting. A little bit later in the meeting would be preferable, especially if we do have other items on the agenda that we could push it off. John Ane, the chair works until like eight o'clock on Tuesday nights. So he can zoom in from work, but.
Did you want like 8:30 or even later than that?
Uh, 8:30 would probably be fine.
Okay. The only other item that I know will be on there is Mark Rhodes wants to, he's got an A and R and a two lot subdivision.
Do you know where?
The, the A and R is on Car Road and the two lot subdivisions on Peach Hill.
A different lot than he has or?
Yep. We can't hear you, Tim.
You're muted.
Same side of the street as the one he, he just finished or?
I don't know whether that's.
I don't think so, because the Wender property is right, abuts that, and that's now all conservation. So it is, it's much further away from the Bolton line. If it's on the same side of the street.
So a subdivision, we've got to go through the subdivision.
Two, two lots.
For two lots.
With a 500 foot, similar to what he did up near Colvin.
For Muldoon. Did he do Muldoons?
Was that Muldoons?
That little two, right there in the corner of Coburn and Randall.
Howard Road.
Okay.
Yep.
So I should familiarize myself with the subdivision bylaws, what you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah.
Bedtime reading.
Yeah.
So I know that he had, he had, he had asked about being on tonight's for at least the A and R, but then he called and said he wouldn't be ready. So.
So Car Road is public. It's good, like the golf courses all around it, right?
There's a, I guess on the way in, on the left hand side, there's a piece of property there now that has a house on it.
All right.
On the left inside, there's the big horse farm.
Oh, look at that. It was a horse farm.
Big one.
It's beautiful.
About that.
There aren't many horses there. There were four there the last time I delivered hay, I think.
And that's somebody's house. It's some private thing.
Yeah.
I'm sure there'll be a story.
Yep.
Because there's an existing house there now supposedly.
Of course, was busy.
So I know he had asked be on the agenda for next time. So I said, when it gets closer, let me know.
Oh, yeah.
Pull a position and then nutshell. So that'd be the only two things that I know of right now.
Okay.
Spend some time reviewing the, the bylaws that we want are the items for the warrant.
Good.
All right.
How can Randall Road go in three different directions?
Welcome to New England.
Are you looking at Randall Road and Bolton is the third direction?
I guess so. It looks like it's connected though.
It's connected to Car Road.
You can actually drive from there to there?
You can. It's, it's not a improved way, but it is a way.
If you're on Tim's track, then you can make it.
No, I mean, people do it.
Yeah.
I think like, like Mrs. McGurty, who lived down here in South Berlin, they ended up with a place over there on Randall Road and in Bolton, but it connects to Car Road in Berlin and then Car Road in Berlin connects to Randall. But the odd thing is that in Bolton, you can be coming along, you know, the continuation of Highland in Bolton and you go past Randall Road and then you come into Berlin and you come past Randall Road again, but the the two aren't connected.
And then you go up Coburn Road and you come by it a third time.
Yeah.
Or West Street.
Yep. It's everywhere.
Yeah. It's really the only road there. All roads lead to Randall Road.
That's what Eloise says.
Well, that's all I got.
All right.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn and second, any other discussion? Seeing none, no one's waving frantically in the background. I will call the vote. Jay Teach.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Tom Sanford. Aye.